Straggling in. He's got one minute. You got one minute?
Welcome.
Oh, you bring your shirt back? You got the other one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, where was yours? Your jaw's back?
So I need to, yeah.
We got all of them.
Okay. Well, I'll bring yours the next time.
Well, now.
Is that right? Or my, who's my given on to?
No, I think it's this you. I think this is yours. Oh, I didn't know there was one in there.
Are you about to give this card or anything?
No, Kim, I think this is, this is large.
Large? Okay. Uh, I think I had a large. I think I needed a medium.
I had an extra large.
Oh, oh, okay.
I mean, I had an extra large, I gave it to him.
Okay. Well, I think mine's large. Oh, let me check.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm an extra large too.
Six block. Okay. You, I don't know. Grab yours and put on for.
I think you need it.
Yeah, you turn it on.
Welcome, everyone. I would like to call the Williamsburg Independent Board of Education meeting to order. Kim Williams will do the roll call. Roger Faulkner, the pleasure of the meeting. Alan Steely. Roger Faulkner.
Kim White.
Here.
Donnie Bruce Patrick.
Here.
Kim Williams.
Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to stand in just for a moment of silence, please? Thank you, may be seated.
Are there any additions or additions before we set the final agenda?
There's none.
Okay. We will move on to special recognition.
We've got a lot to celebrate tonight. This is some of my favorite parts of the board meeting. And tonight, we had so many students to be celebrated. We had to move. We weren't going to celebrate our DECA team, but we're going to do that in March. So that will be a change. But first off, we're going to celebrate our guidance counselors. Um, our guidance counselors and mental health appreciation month. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually move over here and read these so that, um, you guys can come up and get your certificate. But I don't know if you guys understand the need of mental health just in the community, but also nationwide. We have such a need for, for mental health and just support for trauma. Um, I mean, these ladies absolutely, they have a huge undertaking. But they take pride in their job in a way. Our initiatives have encouraged teens to embrace compassion and support one another, creating a positive school climate. Amy's efforts have led to our school being recognized. This is big. As a certified kindness school by the Random Acts of Kindness Foundation, showcasing the impact of her commitment to fostering kindness. Together Maggie and Amy work collaboratively to implement SEO programs that empower students to navigate challenges, build resilience, and form healthy relationships. It's a huge focus for us, just building those relationships. Their dedication ensures that every student feels valued, understood, and supported through our educational journey. As we honor Maggie Y. and Amy Jones, we acknowledge their vital, their vital roles in cultivating a nurturing environment where kindness and emotional well-being thrive. Their hard work and passion for student success continue to make a profound difference in the lives of our school community. I will go on record and say, and sometimes they have to do that for adults. So, please come on up and let me love on you a little bit.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, you're awesome. Make sure you get a good picture, Shawna, this time. I do love you all.
I love you too.
For real. For real, Scotty.
Okay, next on our agenda is the student recon, no, yes, that's all right. We're gonna move on to the staff recognition first.
Okay. So, right along the lines with support and providing healthy relationship building, um, social and emotional learning, and just swooping in to save the day, we have to celebrate Mr. James Faulkner. Mr. Faulkner, you've been literally, I mean, you have saved the day for so many of us. That what I want to say, and I don't know what's written yet, I'll read it. But, um, what I want to say is, and I really value this about you. You come in, you do hard things with students who are going through hard times. But you never stop smiling. You always have a positive outlook on the situation. I am yet to hear you make one complaint. And so you might complain, but I've not heard it, and I've not heard any of my teams say that you've complained. And that to me means more than anything else you can do for us, is just having a positive attitude. So that's from me. But one of your peers said, "We want to express our heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Faulkner, for Mr. Faulkner's unwavering commitment to our students. He consistently goes above and beyond to address their academic, social, emotional, and learning needs. His willingness to assist in any way possible truly embodies the spirit of every student, every day, no matter what it takes. We deeply appreciate Mr. Faulkner's remarkable ability to support students even in the most challenging situations. Thank you, Mr. Faulkner, for everything you do. We appreciate you." I do think we need like a hero cape or something. Appreciate that. Is Ms. Gail here? If not, we'll skip this one and go to the next one, and we'll get her in marked. Um, and then, um, the other two guys, I love this. Um, we have, we always ask for going the extra mile award, and we send it out to staff, and sometimes we let students do it. So, um, we have two guys upstairs that, I'm gonna tell ya, middle school and middle schoolers, I gotta tell ya, I mean, that's a tough crowd. You gotta be one tough cookie to survive middle school. And we got two of them here tonight. So, um, we really want to celebrate John Young and Stevie Watson. Um, the person who nominated you guys is, I don't know who it was, but they said, "I would like to nominate Mr. Young, Mr. John Young and Mr. Steve Watson for going the extra mile. They collaborate to create amazing learning opportunities for students that incorporate math and science. They work so hard to make sure students are learning in an engaging environment." Watching this there with students. Mr. Young is also working diligently with several students in the mentor program to foster a safe environment while being a positive male role model in, in our middle school. Our middle school team is blessed to have both of these teachers. I will say that my daughter's in seventh grade, and there were multiple days she came home and said, "Gosh, I gotta get there because I'm making the deck on my toothpick house," or whatever, and I'm like, "That is amazing! You are challenging our kids and making them want to come to school." And so I'm, I'm really pumped about that. So thank you for being here, come on up. Keep working together. I love that. I saw you laugh when I said Stevie. I'm not allowed, I don't know. That's what Ms. Parton calls you, Stevie. I appreciate you guys.
Next up is our student recognition.
Okay, we got all kinds of kiddos to celebrate. But, um, I first want to say, I do have a little something for one of the leaders of the pack here. And, um, Mr. Khan definitely advocates for his students, his pathway. And he always has, when he walks toward me, he either is gonna say, "Can I pick your brain for a minute?" or "Can I have more money?" Either one. And so, but because of his heart for his pathway and getting kids interested in cyber security, he provides really cool opportunities for them. And so I really pushed Mr. Khan hard. I'm like, "I want you to prove this to me, I want you to prove that this is important." And Mr. Khan, I just want to say, "Thank you for making a difference." So come on up. Without your advocating, they wouldn't be able to achieve these big things. So that's a big deal. I appreciate this. Okay, and now to his group of cyber patriots. We have four students who have earned the Cyber Patriot Seal. And I'll explain what that means, because I, I mean, Mr. Khan talks in language that I'm like, "I don't even know what you're saying," but that sounds really cool. Um, but these kiddos understand. Cyber Patriot is a national youth cyber defense competition created by the Air and Space Forces Association. It challenges students to secure and defend simulated computer systems from cyber threats, providing hands-on experience in cybersecurity principles, vulnerability assessment, and system hardening. This competition is not only a test of technical skills, but also a demonstration of teamwork, perseverance, and critical thinking. The students, I'm about to read off their names, received third place state award middle school division, which is huge. And so the four students that I have an award for are Jericho Howard, Colin Jones, Sawyer Moran, and Peyton White.
Good job.
Good job. Okay, and this is a big woo-woo for our academic team. We had, we actually won first place overall in the district. Um, or was it the district, uh, governor's cup? Okay, awesome. But we have some individual awards. But first I want to say, big thank you to Ms. Lowry and to Ms. Reeves. Um, academic team, it feels like it's just a little thing, but these guys work hard to prepare them and to pick students who are motivated and intrinsically moti, intrinsically driven to learn the content that they're gonna be tested in. And if you've never sat through an academic match, or you've never been through Governor Stoller, it is a full-blown, all-day process. It's kind of like a track. You're there all day long. And so I just want to say, Ms. Lowry and Ms. Reeves, come on up. I appreciate your commitment to our team. Oh, and definitely bring these guys. I mean, come on. I bet they were at the Governor's Stoller with y'all there. Thankfully they weren't. We appreciate you. Now, for the students who worked hard, um, I did make myself some notes so I didn't have to read them all individually. But I want to say, the very first one that we're gonna call is Ms. Chloe Blackwell. She got fifth place in language arcs. She's not here. Okay. Um, John Curtis White got fourth place in mathematics. Ben Stevens got second place in social studies and second place in arts and humanities. Harrison Brooks got second place in mathematics and second place in science. That's a big deal. Since that's your one class. And I'll, I'll deliver his awards class. Okay, now this guy, Zachariah Khan, got first place in math, first place in social studies, and first place in science. And I just gotta ask, where's Meg Judd? I mean, she should be doing cartwheels down the aisle here. That's a big deal. It's first place, man.
That's a big deal.
Proud of you. In three subjects.
Good job.
And then Eli Warfield got second place in social studies, and not shocked, first place in arts and humanities, well done. Very, very impressive. And that's not an easy test, but I don't know if y'all know that, but they're not. Thank you for representing the Jack and Amy, we appreciate you. And then, last but not least, Ms. Crosley Shannon got first place in written composition. I think we should be a job.
Good job.
Good job. Did I miss anybody? I think I got them all. Which is nice. Okay.
Congratulations to all the participants for their impressive accomplishments. Next up on our agenda is our special speaker, Jerry Heron, who will speak about the swim team.
It's weird to use a microphone, but, uh, basically, we've been approached to start a swim team in Williamsburg. We've got several parents that are excited about it, looking forward to, uh, uh, kids involved, helping raise money for it, things like that. So basically what we're asking for is, uh, for the board to approve a swim team for elementary this year. The school doesn't fund elementary sports and anything else, so basically we just have like a elementary swim team. We're gonna get a memorandum of understanding, rental agreement with Cumberland to use their pool. Uh, we have a coach that's volunteered to do it. Stand up, sir. This is Coach Bush, has volunteered to do it.
Our mental health providers. She provides a ton of mental health supports for us too.
Yes, yes, already currently working with us. So basically, we're asking for you to approve a swim team for this year for elementary. And moving forward for the 25, 26 school year, we're asking that we have a high school swim team, boys and girls swim team. And we're asking for comparable coaches' stipend and comparable, comparable, um, athletic budget. You know, comparable to other sports like tennis, track, whatever's, you know, comparable numbers and things like that. So you're looking at roughly a $2,500, um, coaches' stipend, anywhere from $1,000, $1,500 for, uh, athletic budget for the team, for the high school. So we're asking for you to, of course, okay the swim team for this year, and then moving forward for the swim team for next year with Coach Bush. And of course, a lot contingent upon having the memorandum of understanding to use the Cumberland's pool. We have that, a verbal agreement right now to, for rental. We do have to pay so much money to do it, and that's part of the budget she'll have to raise. And she's quickly aware that most of us have our budget, and then we have to raise some other money to have the team. And she's completely aware of that. The parents are on board with it, they know. We've got several parents in the room that's interested in it, and they're aware of it. And really just excited to give our kids a chance to do something with sport. And it is during basketball season, it's a winter sport. So it's, uh, it'd be a, except for elementary, I guess, starting soon. The elementary starts April 1st, that's why we're pressed to get it approved so we can do bid for this year. And, um, would you say Bush, the school set the elementary team or the club? I don't know if you could hear, she said Corbin Whitley, north of South Laurel's, interested in doing like a school team, a school league, so we'd have somebody competing against. They're fired up wanting to do it with us. I think Whitley's already using that water at Cumberland. And it's, it's, they've already had verbal agreement that they would let us use it too. Pay, obviously got paid a rental fee, which is not much, they call it water time. So we're just asking for approval for this year. No cost to us, other than, obviously, we're, you know, we're asking, we're covering the insurance policy, that everything that we do with that. And then next year, covered by the insurance policy, and then the funding of 2,500 for, which I'm saying that number, but it's comparable. I mean, I know we talked about raising the budget as things like that go, but it's comparable to the same sports. That's all we're asking for, so. That's, any questions?
Jerry, I'm just appreciative of those that, um, have discussed this and have spent their time working through the details of it. Um, and I'd be glad to make this motion when it's called.
Any questions?
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Relating to public matters, each person wishing to address the Board of Education may do so at this time. Next up on the agenda is our superintendent and principal comments.
So for tonight, we're gonna have two different people presenting information to you. Mr. Taylor's gonna come and talk to you about our, our progress on our district facilities plan, and then we'll have Ms. Parton give you a learning update.
So I was planning to talk in depth about the district facility plan. Uh, however, that had caught a little bit of a snag this week. So, um, we are prepared to have our la, our third meeting, which should be our last meeting from the local planning committee on March the 4th. But before we can do that, KDE has to approve our draft DFP that was sent after our February meeting. Upon some discussion today, this, the folks at KDE have not yet reviewed our plan. So we're kind of just stuck for the moment. The hope is for the March board meeting that the draft DFP will have been approved by KDE, and then the board at that point would have a chance to vote on whether or not to accept that for final approval. So that's really kind of the process. I thought I was gonna be able to share a whole lot more with you. Um, KDE comments about our plan and some of the things that we needed to think about, but it appears that we're going to have to wait until the March meeting to dive into that and again, and again, get your final approval on that. And then I was prepared to do that tonight, but like I said, KDE has not reviewed our plan, so we found that out this afternoon. Any questions at the moment, though, in our process that we have? And I think you did get a draft copy of what's been sent. One of the things that's probably glaring on the page is the huge amount of unmet need that the district will have. Probably all districts will have as far as that goes. But, um, our architect has done a good job of auditing our building and, um, going through our, you know, basically our building inventory to, you know, for us to figure out what our biggest needs are. But again, until we have comments back from KDE, I don't know how to advise the board on what to do next. So hopefully we can do that in March.
Mark, are we within timelines?
Yeah, we're, we're actually a little bit ahead, so I feel good about that. We just need to have it to them, uh, by June 30th. And so if we can get, you know, approval, uh, at the next meeting, that we're in plenty enough time.
We appreciate your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so we've had a little snag with not having a Promethean board in here with all of the lovely planetarium and steam stations and such that we've had going on. But you will find in the agenda, you actually have a link to some slides, and we can get them printed out for you too. But we just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on where we're at in our MAP growth. So we take MAP in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And so historically, we usually see a dip in the winter before scores rise in the spring. But we have had several groups that have shown significant growth, actually, from fall to winter this year. And so that's a celebration for us. In our reading scores, our kindergarteners went from 57% to 65% of them that were on grade level. Our second graders went from 37% to 41% on grade level. Fifth went from 39% to 54% on grade level. Overall, as a district, we had, um, our percentage of students on grade level grew 7.81%. And so the next closest district to that was only 3.68%. So that is a huge celebration, for sure. Um, we had a lot of growth within those grades, um, in math as well. Our kindergarteners went from 40% to 63% of students on grade level. Second grade went from 28% to 44%. Third went from 35% to 43%, and then fifth grade from 32% to 51%. Overall, our district percentage of students on grade level rose 4.07%. And the next closest district again was 3.5. So we are growing faster than any other district around according to those MAP, um, growth from fall to winter, so. And you can look at, um, Josh created some wonderful graphics for you to look at, and they're linked there in the agenda. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have any staff comments? Next up, we'll hear from our WEA representative.
So building off on that, um, that's the first thing I wanted to mention was the MAP data, and to thank, uh, the teaching and learning coaches and the assistant principals. When we have our PLCs, they've been able to put together just an amazing spreadsheet for us to look at. Even specific areas in different contents that we can look at. And this is from the MAP data, and it's from, we were actually, I think, in the middle school and high school, were able to practice on-demand writing. And the teaching and learning coaches helped, the teachers graded, so there wasn't, you know, a huge workload on there. And it gave us a sense of what the, where the students were on that level. So it, whenever we begin getting to a period of hopefully being here for a long period of time, we've got all the data we need to break down specific skills they need. So we've got everything ready. I know in the high school soon, we're gonna start using our STING period to do extra, um, practice stuff for the state assessment coming up, and we're gonna focus on, um, those skills. So it'll give us 30 extra minutes a day to work with more smaller group sessions. But without them and the, and the data that they help collect and they show to us, and we talk about in our, in our weekly PLCs, I mean, it'd be a ton of extra work to do on ours. So the fact that they helped do all that for us is, is awesome, and it's a big, it's a big breakdown. If you're able to see it, like, I mean, if you see the test, it tells you every single skill for every student, what they're strong at, what they're... If you're able to see it, like, I mean, if you see the test, it tells you every single skill for every student, what they're strong at, what they're, what they need more work on. So it helps us, you know, build certain lessons for them. And it's been great for our team to, to have that. And really, the only other thing to talk about is really for us just to kind of stay kind of legislative aware right now. Cause it's that time of year where, you know, our state legislative branch is in session. I've been reading up on a lot of the bills that are in committees. As far as the education committee, most of them seem to do with universities. I've not seen too much that focus on public education, but we know that normally something comes up that we've gotta really advocate either for or against, they'll help us. And then, of course, there's just a question of everything else that could happen as far as funding wise. And hopefully that everything stays going in a, in a good flow for us, since everything was kind of frozen and unfrozen. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
We'll move on to our consent agenda. Approval of January minutes, monthly bills, treasurer's report, monthly financial report, fundraiser requests and board travel for the upcoming month. Are there any questions? I need a motion to approve these mentioned items.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Two.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. We'll move on to the action agenda. Number one, approval of adding an elementary swim team for this current 24-25 academic school year. Are there any questions? Superintendent Tabitha, Housekeeper recommends the board to approve adding an elementary swim team for this current 24-25 academic school year. I need a motion to approve this action item.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Two.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. Number two, approval of the proposed first draft of the 25-26 school calendar.
This is an opportunity for, I will have, we've got Ms. Crowley here who was part of the committee. Did a ton of work on the backend, just making sure that she spoke to individual teachers, she got feedback, she met with the committee. And then Mr. Berta's been our lead on this. And I'm really thankful I was able to be like, I trust you, go, go team. Really good for me.
So, seven drafts later, we have a proposed school calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. This is kind of, this may be, we're gonna transit, I don't know what that thing's doing. I'm just gonna try to talk over here, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
So, one of the things that we're transitioning to for the upcoming school year is going back to a traditional school calendar. Instead of the variable school calendar. The variable school calendar allows us to go by hours and instructional minutes versus instructional days. And so the traditional school calendar, we have to meet two requirements. 1,062 hours of instruction time and 170 days. Draft seven has a proposed 173 days. Some said, well, why do we have 173 days if we're only required to go 170? Teachers wanted more instruction time in the classroom. Some of the, some of the staff concerns that we, that we had in some of the meetings is that instruction time needs to increase. If we go into a situation like we are this year with the variable calendar, we have three days that are kind of considered to be banked days. So we can, so let's say we miss three days outside of our 10 NTI days, which is 13 days. We still go the 170, we don't have to make those three days up. Because we've met the, the day count and we've met the hour count as far as 1,062. So, the calendar's got a lot of things kind of being thrown at you here. I mean, it's a big jump from the, from the variable school calendar, cause a lot of folks like the variable school calendar. But from an instructional standpoint, and this is kind of something that I shared with the calendar committee Tuesday. Is that, right now, if you look at our current school year, we had a, we had 164 instructional days. We take 10 of those away for NTI, that puts us at 154. Minus the four and a half banked hour, or the bank days that we had, so it put us right at 150 instructional days. You're talking, if we don't miss any school on the traditional calendar, you're talking 23 days of instruction time added to the calendar. And so, one of the concerns for, some of the, some of the concerning things that was kind of brought up is, you know, you can see that we have parent teacher conferences scheduled right before some of our breaks right there. One of the things that Mrs. Housekeeper and I and along with Ms. Crowley kind of discussed is that we're gonna pair those with a family engagement night to get folks more involved. Just like we did with the community Thanksgiving meal. You know, we pair it so folks have something else, something positive to look forward to. We obviously want the community to come into the building, we want parents and guardians to come in and, and talk about the educational piece with their teachers. But we're also gonna have engaging activities so that they're more likely to show up. Some of the things that were kind of brought up is there was, there's, there's like gray, I don't know if you're all just colored or not, but on mine, it's a colored copy. And so it has, it has like gray shadowed out dates, those are the end of terms. And so it's actually at the bottom in the, and I call it the legend down there. It says, this is the end of term, so that was kind of confusing for some folks. But those are, there's nothing significant there other than it's just the end of the term. Have an early release day on February 20th. And the reason that we've, we've kind of established that is that staff will remain in the building on an early release day for planning purposes. So, well, what's planning purposes? We've got map testing for winter that has just ended. We also have map testing for spring that is getting ready to start. And that gives us, that gives us an opportunity for teachers to adjust their instructional practices. So that we can see increased achievement on the, the spring map predictor, which is also a predictor for the KSA test at the end of the year. That was all that I was gonna address here.
So the purpose of your reading through it tonight is we have, you know, we have to have a second reading before we ever approve it? So this is just opening up the door for you guys to be able to read it, there's nothing to approve. But just, you know, what are questions you have between now and the March board meeting? And Roger is serving on our calendar committee, so if you have questions, you can let me know, you can let Berta know, or Roger can speak on behalf of the board. Just questions and ideas or thoughts, any changes you'd like for us to make going forward before the March board meeting?
I think most of my questions have been addressed tonight. And I'm, I'm very appreciative for the group to spend the time that they've spent with this.
Yeah, we, we spent, we spent several hours going back and forth on this. And, and honestly, the instructional time is gonna be the key to success here. We wanna see higher student achievement, we gotta have students in the classroom more. And so, one thing that I, that I do encourage, that if there are changes that you all would like to make, kind of reach out to Mrs. Housekeeper pretty soon. So that we can have another committee meeting if that is necessary. Because then again, it would have to go back to that committee in order to change those things, so. On a positive note, outside of the, the current school calendar, I'm just gonna kind of speak on this real quick. We got some, some updated information for all the flooding scenarios and all of the active shooter scenarios and all of this mess. And so currently, House Bill 241 is kind of in the mix of, of the legislators here. And this is gonna allow the districts to go from the, the traditional calendar to meeting the requirement of 1,062. You say, well, that sounds great, doesn't do anything for us because we're already on this variable school calendar. So, I kind of confirmed that with KDE leadership today.
So it doesn't?
So it does not do anything for us, except for they're pushing for five NTI days, additional NTI days. Now, I don't know if that's gonna be approved or not. That's just kind of one of the things that, that is kind of in the mix. So as of right now, we're still kind of in the current situation that we were the last time.
Which means we have two days to make up. And we're gonna get creative with that, we'll have a plan that will, and hopefully we'll hear something before the next board meeting. But we'll present a plan to you guys of what our options are. One of the things I want to say about the calendar, and I think this is critical for everyone to understand. So we buy, you know, for a teacher to get, or a certified staff member to get one year of teacher retirement, they have to work 185 days. And so I just think this is a critical point, and it shows the heart of our teachers and the heart of what we're trying to do here. 185 days in order to have one year of teacher retirement. We pay our staff, our certified regular employee staff, our teachers, I can't remember who else falls in that category, but typically our teachers. We pay them 186 days. Currently, this year's calendar, we have students for 164.
That's correct.
So we have staff here 22 more days than we have kids. What I feel deeply and what our teachers want and what our admin team is screaming is can we not fill those 22 days with more days of kids? And I hate to break it to you, but we all love kids more anyway. We like to be with them more than we do adults. So, it would increase instructional time with our students. And if we have a crazy year like this, then they get what they need. And I just don't see how we can make progress in academics if we don't change our mindset to, we don't need 20 days without, 20 to 22 days without kids. We need kids feeling that time. Cause staff will be here anyway. So I just want you to keep that in mind as we go forward. And I know that the traditional calendar is a change, but when Berta presented it to me that the committee wanted that, I was all for it. And I just think it's what's best for kids. And if we're doing this the right way, we have to not think about us, we have to think about what is best for kids. And so, just going forward, keep that in mind.
As a board, everything we did last spring was geared toward the academics.
Hundred percent.
So we gotta put the kids in front of, to be able to make this work.
Yeah, it does push back the start date a little bit, to earlier start date there, so, you know, just kind of be mindful of those things.
There'll be a change in the community, I've been warned of that, that the community has been used to starting late and whatever. But, and those are things that I feel like are okay if we get that pushback, but we need to be able to explain. We just want access to our students more. And we want our teachers to feel like they have time to make the progress with our students that, that we're expecting. Cause right now, I can tell you, this year has been so choppy, I can't imagine the stress of our teachers.
If we miss no more, I mean, we're gonna have 150 days with students this year.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
That's not enough.
And so, you're adding 23 additional days, just based on this year, you're adding 23 additional days of instructional time, so.
It's what's best for kids, and if that's what we're here for, we gotta think like that.
We don't know what we're gonna go through next year.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't know what's gonna happen. We have three days that we'll be able to utilize outside of our 10 NTI days, cause we'll apply for those again like we do every year.
I just encourage you, as soon as the board finalizes this calendar, we need to get it to our families.
Yeah, it'll be pushed out as soon as, as soon as we have a second reading, it'll be pushed out. We've done several surveys with the staff, with the community, with all stakeholders, and I think that is included in your folders there.
Last year, we sent out a stakeholder survey, that was what you guys asked us to do in between reading one and reading two. And we had 23 responses last year. This year, we've doubled that, or more than doubled that at least. So I feel like, you know, that's still not, it's still not a huge sample of our population, but the people who want to have a voice, they had an opportunity. And so we have some options, you all can present us with those if you would like us to send out a second survey, whatever you want us to do, just think about it. And send me, send Berta a note of what the committee, what you'd like for them to do. If there's other questions or whatever. And I hope our jacket family that's watching the board meeting, if you have questions, don't sit on it, ask us. If you have suggestions, if you have things that you really are advocating for, let us know, cause we won't know if you don't communicate it. I appreciate you, Berta.
Yeah, thank you.
The man even had a root canal today, guys.
Thank you. Approval of the updated sick leave policy for certified and classified personnel.
Ms. Carrie Hamblin?
Okay, we have done a few changes to the sick leave policy. And this is really just kind of spelling it out more for both classified and certified staff. So, I have added in that to receive a donation, you have to suffer from a catastrophic loss or a member of his immediate family. I'm just kind of summarizing, so if you guys have questions, please let me know. The employee's need for absence and use of leave is certified by physician. The employee has exhausted his or her accumulated sick leave, personal leave and any other leave that they have before they can be donated days. This is already in there, however, this is really just spelling it out more because I get a lot of questions. Do you guys have any questions on those?
I will go back and say this, let me help her out here. We pulled the policy, so we had a question, can a classified employee donate a sick day to a certified employee? And at first, I was like, oh gosh, well first I said yes, of course. And I'm like, well, hold on though, we gotta think about daily rate, we gotta think about all that. We did reach out to other people in surrounding areas and other HR directors, and the answer is yes. And it does, it's equivalent to one day, so that was good for us to know. But we, I said, we gotta pull our policy. It was about eight pages. Our policy had like a committee formed and you had to have a bank and you had to have application process. And then you had like the keeper of the, of the sick leave bank who had to meet and approve every, I'm like, we don't have time for this. And so, our proposal is that we revise the current policy that's, that's active to a policy that looks like multiple others. That seems to be an update since whenever we updated it last. And I think the last one was '04, was it? Or '08, that the policy had been updated, it's time for a reboot. Cause I can tell you, the bank, it's too hard to even think about.
It was a lot. But everything that I've put in here is stuff that was already on there, it's just more spelled out for people.
Simplified.
I mean, it is, it is basically the exact same thing, just where a normal person reading it would understand it a little better.
Carrie Anne, I think we probably need to have some discussion as to whether you want it to stay physician only.
Okay.
The healthcare world has changed quite a bit. And many of our students are seen by nurse practitioners or physicians assistants. And if you're asking for a physician signature, I think that's gonna slow your process some. I just think we need to think about that and maybe change that verbiage just a little bit.
Well, anytime we change a policy, we have to let you read it first and then any suggestions that you make. So I would love for you to take a home and look through it with a fine tooth comb and compare it to the one that we currently have. See if we missed anything, and then let us know if there's any revisions we need to make. And then we'll bring this, bring the next policy, you know, the updated second version to the next meeting, and then we can approve it, if you all approve.
Can you get me a copy of both, please?
I sure will.
Oh, yes, Kim, we got you.
Got you.
Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead and do this?
Yeah, and then the second one, so it'll just stay right there.
Okay.
The approval of the updated salary schedule for the sporting event worker.
So right now, the way the sporting event works is they're paid a set rate per ballgame. So what we have come up with as a group is to pay each event worker, no matter what job they do, a set hourly rate. So it would be $15 is what we are suggesting. They will be limited on how many hours they can get per ballgame.
So the way we have it right now, there's no, we don't have anything in policy, anything in approval process that states that everybody gets the same rate of pay. We can't guarantee it's equitable, there's nothing that states that it has to be a certain amount. When Dalton and Mr. Taylor and Carrie and I met, we kind of broke it down and looked at what we're paying our staff. And it does average out to be about, I mean, pretty much everybody's making about $15 an hour depending on the thing, the event that they're running. And we wanted it to be, you know, equitable across the time that you spend. You work a football game, you're there for four hours or five hours. Well, they were getting a set pay. But you get the same pay if you work a, a middle school basket, volleyball game. And those don't last nearly as long. So we said, well, why don't we break it down to So we said, well, why don't we break it down to hourly? And it ends up coming out to be about the same, but it's just more fair to the staff. Because if you work fo- five hours for a football game, you get five hours of the fifteen dollars an hour.
Are there any questions? Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board approve the updated salary schedule for sporting event worker. I need a motion to approve this item.
I'll make the motion to approve this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. Approval to increase the price of district tournament ticket sales.
Uh, Coach Hare or Mr. Taylor, you wanna talk about this? He's too busy. Coach, would you like to talk about the ticket sales?
We're asked, ten dollars general admission, um, reserve ticket sixty for the block. That helps off, offset the cost of referees, or eighty-nine dollars apiece, times three a game. Um, I mean, it's just the prices of these tournaments are just exponential, exploding. Cheerleading, we paid out today, it's a hundred and fifty dollars per judge, times two, I mean, it's just every time a tournament's another. Just bleeding money, so we need that to help offset the cost, so we can have some money at the end to give to our teams after it's over. We'd like ten for general admission and sixty for the block of reserved tickets.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Jerry. Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board approve to increase the price of general admission to ten dollars and the price of reserved seats to fifteen dollars for next week's district basketball tournament. I need a motion to approve this item.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. Approval for the high school baseball team to travel to Gatlinburg, Tennessee during spring break of this year. Are there any questions? Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board approve the high school baseball team to travel to Gatlinburg, Tennessee during spring break of this year. I need a motion to approve this item.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. Approval of memorandum of agreement with Commonwealth of Kentucky and WISD for SEBT school payment C five six six one.
You, you wanna, I think you should talk about it.
So one of the things that kind of as a result from the pandemic several years ago was this SEBT payment to our families. And so one of the things that, that the state did was they said, we know that it takes an additional person, or it takes somebody to do this, and it takes time to, out of somebody's day to do this, so we're gonna help offset the cost to the district as far as, uh, what it's costing the district to take time. Every month, I do a meeting with the SEBT program. It's just a supplemental program that they give funds for, for our families during the summer months, um, to buy groceries, things like that. So they're offsetting the administrative cost, there's programs that we have to, that we had to, to give to do that. Um, so I think it was around fifteen hundred dollars is what, what they were trying to give the districts just to help offset the cost of doing this every month. I have to meet with these guys every month and upload files and data every single month, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board to the MOA with Commonwealth of Kentucky and WIS, WISD for SEBT school payment C five six six one. I need a motion to approve this action item.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. Approval of memorandum of agreement between JAG and WISD.
You wanna talk about JAG, Ms. Parton? You want me to talk about JAG? Mister, I think Josh Patrick, you wanna talk about JAG?
JAG is wonderful. Our, uh, Ms. Osmore, who runs our JAG program, I mean, she's doing a phenomenal job. She is able to form partnerships with our outside communities, community people. She brings them into our school as guest speakers. She does celebrations with her students. I mean, she is just taking this program and reigned with it. Um, JAG is new to our school this year. Um, she's taken her students on lots of trips, lots of career-related opportunities. And not only do they get these experiences, but also she works with them in the classroom on the social skills and the soft skills that they will need to be better employees in the future. And so she's doing a great job, and we're very thankful to have JAG.
So we also, this is important to the board, but we also, as being a part of this, um, agreement, we also get a forty thousand dollar reimbursement toward a JAG teacher's salary.
Really?
Yeah. So this isn't an additional position unless they make over forty thousand, and then with that, they also get two days of professional development. They get so many people hands-on with that teacher to guide them. But the whole point is that we're increasing employability skills in our district and in our students. And, you know, jobs for American graduates is what we're trying to work on. That's what we want, is post-secondary readiness, and that they're able to go out into the workforce. And I don't want them to just be able to get a job. I want them to be the absolute frontrunner to get that job. I want them to be the top candidate for any position they apply for. And so Ms. Osmore's taking that and running with it, so.
I would just say, you know, like celebrating Ms. Osmore's doing, because I've been able to be in there, talking with her, and she's forward-thinking and wanting to push that, um, in a way that's really best for our students. And she's highly motivated, um, she's innovative and wanting to create these kind of connections for students to see what they can do to accomplish it post-secondary readiness.
Are there any questions?
I'm not sure that, um, I may have this, I believe that I read that there's also, is there an instructional assistant in this also? No, there's not.
No, you can have that, but you also, um, one of the commitments we make is that we provide them with an extra planning. So any JAG teacher, doesn't matter who it is, they get their regular planning, but then they get an additional planning to also, and then have a block of the day where they're able to go out and form these community partners and get these students so they can mentor, they can go and observe. I mean, what's been great and the beauty of a unit, district and a unit school is we have several CTE pathways that connect with JAG, so they partner together to go to the Toyota plant, to go to LA. And so they get even more opportunities, but JAG is more focused on the individual student and what are their interests. And if they wanna be a pastor one day, or they wanna be a doctor one day, you go, you take them and you get them in communication with somebody in the community that will help them. It's a little bit more hands-on.
Okay, 'cause I was a little bit confused with that verbiage, I think, so, okay, thank you.
Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board to approve the MOA between JAG and WISD. I need a motion to approve this item.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. Approval of a shortened school day for a student.
Um, this is just a standard procedure we have to do in order to get a shortened, a school day for students or shortened school week through Kentucky. It has to be board-approved, and then it's automatically approved by KDE. So this is just an update on the student of concern.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board to approve a shortened school day for a student. I need a motion to approve this item.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. The Superintendent Tabitha Housekeeper recommends the board to enter into an executive closed session for the purpose to discuss early graduation. I need a motion to approve this action item.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, light sign. The motion is approved. We ask everyone to exit the auditorium for this executive closed session.